I'd like to call the June 16th meeting of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners to order and welcome all of you who are here this evening with us in person and also welcome those who are watching on our live stream broadcast on YouTube. Welcome to you. As is customary for us, we will open with an invocation and a pledge. I've asked Commissioner Davis to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Godwin to lead us in the pledge. So if you so choose, please stand for the invocation and then stand for the pledge.
If you'll bow your heads.
Thank you, Lords, for this day. Thank you for everyone gathered here. Thank you for everyone in this room as we help us guide our decisions. Please make sure we're doing everything in your name and for the purpose of Johnson County, please make sure that we all are able to have great discussions tonight and being able to have the people of Johnson County in our hearts and our minds. Please do with everyone here as we leave our meeting and go about the business of Johnson County. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated. Did want to remind everyone of the board's six priorities as we entertain motion on our budget to know that we considered each one of those as we go through it and they are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And you will, and many, many items and all items in the budget, all six of those are interwoven through that. So the first item is approval of the agenda. Is there any need to modify the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, adding an item 5A for emergency services, Northside Fire and Rescue request to purchase land.
All right, five. And let me just, so does that mean the utilities discussion is 5B? Or where does that come after?
Comes before.
Okay, yeah.
Beautiful.
All right. All right, any other adjustments? All right, we had a motion. I forgot if I heard a second or not. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we have six items on the consent agenda to consider. First one is approval of the minutes from our May 19, 6 o'clock meeting. Next is a proposed road name change. And then we have two public hearings scheduled. One is for the Johnson County Water and Wastewater System Development Fees. That is scheduled for July the 21st at 10:00 a.m. at our 10:00 a.m. meeting. And then the next one is the Johnson County Land Development Code Stormwater Management Ordinance. And that is also a public hearing. It will be August the 4th at our 10:00 a.m. meeting. We also have a contract for facilities condition assessment and CMMs, Computer Maintenance Management System. We have four budget revisions, one for the Health Department, one for the jail, one for Social Services, and one for the Sheriff's Department. Are there any of those items that need to be withdrawn for additional discussion? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda in the items presented.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have public comments. And this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes to do that. And we ask that you maintain proper decorum at all times and make your comments in a civil manner. And we do ask that when you come forward, if you would state your name and town or township. With that, I will open, open the podium and Mr. Chapman.
I apologize. I miscounted. I only have six of these. I'll hand these out. Hopefully the chair and vice chair maybe can share.
Yeah, yeah. And I forgot, there's three minutes. I forgot that part. Sorry.
Three minutes. I'll keep, I'll try to keep it under that. Thank you. Hello, my name is Ben Chapman. I live in Clayton. Before you are copies of the proclamation that was adopted by the town of Clayton for June. The reason I'm here is to express my concerns regarding employment law and policy in Johnston County. Earlier this year, the Johnson County Board of Education attempted to remove gender identity and sexual orientation language from several policies. This included the district's employment policy, number 7,100. This board can debate and change school policy as they see fit, but they cannot change state and federal law. The Supreme Court decision, Bostock v. Clayton County, is precedent that expands federal nondiscrimination protections in employment. At the core of this case was the question, does Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 encompass discrimination based on an individual's sexual orientation? The decision that an employer who fires an individual employee merely for being gay or transgender violates Title VII. Justice Neil Gorsuch authored the opinion for 6/3 majority of the court. Look now at Clayton's proclamation. It cites Executive Order Number 29 NC Reg. 958962. This is what established policies prohibiting discrimination, harassment, and retaliation on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity or expression in state employment, state services, and state contracts. State and federal law are beyond the scope of your responsibilities as commissioners. However, you can adopt local law and proclamations. Two years ago, I spoke here and I encouraged many of you to, to look at the nondiscrimination ordinance adopted in Wake County as a potential model. Since 2020, local governments have been empowered by the North Carolina General Assembly to enact local law governing discrimination. Wake County partnered with Campbell Law School, and I want to strongly encourage the Johnson County do the same. This is about fulfilling the promise of the 1964 Civil Rights Act for all Johnstonians. This is about common sense protections. This is about doing the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Crystal Britton from Selma. And I'm with Down Home, North Carolina, Johnson County Chapter. Down Home is a member-led, and we are building a nonpartisan multiracial power with poor and working people in our state, small towns, rural communities. Many low-income families and seniors face barriers to access fresh, affordable food here in Johnston County. In 2002, that number was 29,000, about 11% of our county. Johnson County Public Schools, School Nutrition Services launched their very first summer feeding program on June 5th at Smithfield Elementary, Smithfield Middle School. We served over 33,500 meals on that first day in just six hours. They are still looking for volunteers to help. The registration for meals is now closed. How many families in need do you think ended up missing out on these free meals due to lack of transportation, lack of awareness, or lack of county assistance? One out of five children in North Carolina do not know where their next meal will come from. North Carolina ranks 10th in the USA for food insecurity, the state of being without reliable access to a sufficient quality of affordable nutritious food as of 2021. Currently, there are no farmers markets in Johnston County. They are accepting SNAP, Supplement Nutrition Existence Programs. We are wanting to change that by bringing the equipment and the programming to one of the markets and to get double-bots programs running by the end of this year. This program doubles the purchasing power of SNAP dollars at farmers, at farms or farmers markets through a dollar-to-dollar match, helping families afford more fresh food while supporting local farms and boosting the county's economy. Down Home had several meetings with different commissioners to gauge their interest in our campaign and to find out how achievable our goals were. After achieving these goals and much time and research, our request of less than $20,000 was denied. We feel that it is important to ask again to be included in the upcoming budget. With the uncertainty happening at the state and federal level, this is especially important. What will that mean to our county? The people that live here, who already rely on these benefits, and how will they be affected moving forward? SNAP benefits exist because financial instability doesn't discriminate. Life changes fast, and no one should face hunger just because they hit a rough patch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing no one come forward. And Madam Clerk, do we have any emails for the public comments, just on the budget? Okay, all right. Thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is a presentation from Brightspeed, updating us on their status. And I believe we have Mr. Steve Brewer here to do that for us. Welcome, Mr. Brewer.
There you go. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, Steve Brewer, Director of Governmental Affairs for Brightspeed. Been with you a number of times here and always enjoy being here and happy to update you on the progress of our fiber builds to the Rafter community. So I've got one slide here that contains a great deal of information about the fiber that Brightspeed has, that Brightspeed has built or is in the process of building. What's not represented on here is the fiber locations that was acquired when Brightspeed assumed control over the assets back in October of 2022. And then what's also not, not represented on here are the remaining eligible locations in your community. And when I say remaining eligible, that's remaining grant-eligible locations in your community. And I'll, I'll speak to those in a bit more detail in here in just a moment. So obviously, we've got a map here of Johnston County. The pale orange peach color that you'll see in the background there, that is our footprint within the county. And, you know, that's quite frankly, the area we've been, we've been serving or the assets that Brightspeed acquired has been serving for decades. It is, it is not unlikely now for us to begin serving outside of our footprint. As a matter of fact, we're exploring that in a great deal of detail and expect to do that sometime in the near future. So I'd say the white swath that you see running north to south, kind of in the, pretty much in the center of the county, you may see us also branch out there in the very near future to start covering some of those areas as well.
Is that covered by another provider currently?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's another telephone provider. I believe it may well be AT&amp;T.
And that large tan area kind of in the center southeast, that's the low grounds where there's not anything?
We don't have fiber assets there.
Okay. I was just thinking, there's, there's nothing but swamp there, I think. So that's, that's when I look at that gap.
So what I'll do is walk through the different dots that you see on the screen. Each of them have a, have a different meaning. So the first that you'll see, the first dot is the green dots. And there's actually 3,925 green dots represented on this map. Obviously, you're not seeing quite that many because there's a great deal of overlap and some of the green dots are actually covered up. But those are locations that we are serving by way of the Great Grant. That is a, that's a grant program that's funded by the American Rescue Plan and administered by NCDIT. And again, we were ordered, we were awarded 3,925 locations under that particular program. To date, 574 of those locations are open for sale. With the balance, should be coming online sometime around the end of the year, very early in the, the first quarter. We do provide quarterly updates to, to Mr. Hester's office by way of our internal broadband office. And, and we, he will get those, or he and his team will get those. And, and that will update not only the Great Grant, but the, the next round that are, or the next dots that I was going to discuss. And that's CAB, you'll see it listed in the, in the legend, is CAB II. That is NCDIT, North Carolina Department of Information Technology. That's their CAB 2.0. So that's the second round of CAB awards. And we were awarded 1,439 locations. Really fairly recently, those were announced. As a matter of fact, there was a, there was an additional award within the last seven to 10 days awarded to another provider, much smaller. I think it was about 200 locations. And that concludes, is my understanding, the CAB II awards by NCDIT. So those locations are due essentially, right now as it stands, the end of 2026. I spoke to construction manager this morning. They believe that they will have the, those locations online sometime around third, at some point during the third quarter of 2026. The next dot that you see are the red dots. That's the vast majority of them. There's just over 35,000 red dots. Those are the locations that we're bringing fiber, we're in the process of bringing fiber to using our own private investment dollars. So there's no grant awards associated with those. And then the, the next color is inclusive of, or is included in that 35,000. We have, we have some, just over seven, well, almost, what, 17, 714 that are already open for sale. And, and that 17, which represents basically half of the private investment, is already open for sale. So again, I mentioned earlier, there was, there was two, two statuses, if you will, that are not represented on here. One is the, the fiber that we acquired when we purchased the asset. They're not shown there. But the one that you're probably most interested in is the remaining eligible locations. As of the last CAB II grant awards for this county, there are approximately 4,300 locations that remain eligible for broadband grants. And what makes them eligible is that they lack service of 100 by 20. And that's 100 meg coming into your location, 20 meg going out. And keep in mind, the fiber that we are building, all of these dots you see here will be, are served, or will be served by fiber. That fiber is able to provide up to two gigs right now. So that's 2,000 meg in, and the fiber is actually a symmetrical fiber. So it's 2,000 gig, up to 2,000 gig, excuse me, 2,000 meg in, 2,000 meg out of your location. And the fiber is actually capable of ultimately carrying somewhere between seven and 10 gig when that becomes necessary. So as you can tell, very much a future-proof network. But at any rate, those, those remaining 4,300 locations, they are going to be eligible for the BEED program. You may have heard as of late that the NCTIA, which stands for National Telecommunications and Information Administration, they are an agency within the U.S. Department of Commerce. They administer that, the BEED grant program at the federal level, though it is carried out or fulfilled by NCDIT here in North Carolina. So they actually issued a compressed schedule very recently. So NCDIT is busy right now publishing a map that will include all eligible areas in North Carolina, all eligible locations or addresses in North Carolina. So there will be a Johnston County map that will publish the exact location of these approximate 4,300 locations that remain eligible for the grant program. We can expect, and once that is done, they will open up the, the process to all providers. And we can expect grant announcements somewhere about September 4th of, of this year. And then, once NCDIT, North Carolina Department of Information Technology, issues those awards, they're preliminary awards, they have to get approval from NTIA. And NTIA has committed to approving or asking for revisions by end of year. So what I'm telling you is, there should be a plan in place that funds universal service, meaning everyone has access to, to service of at least 100 by 20 by end of this year. The BEED program, I would assume, obviously, I won't know until contracts are signed, but I would assume that will come with approximately a 24-month build-out period for those remaining locations. So those, those 4,300 remaining locations that are eligible for grants, they may be obviously awarded to multiple providers. And quite frankly, it could be awarded to multiple technologies. I do expect as part of the BEED program to see a number of locations served by fixed wireless or by satellite. Obviously, we are a fiber provider, and we, we hope to serve as many of those locations as possible with fiber. We, we obviously believe fiber is the, the best technology. It certainly provides the fastest speeds on the market today. So with that, I will be happy to entertain any of your questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Brewer?
I had one. The, I think the award letter said the average cost per location was like $2,234 for connection for each customer. How does that, first of all, does that completely cover the cost? Or do you, or is there any money that Brightspeed has to put in on top of that?
Brightspeed does contribute, it's part of the grant program. And each of those, the amount that we contribute varies from grant to grant. You know, certainly, that is public information. I apologize, I did not come equipped to specifically tell you. But yes, all providers that are part of the broadband grant programs. And there is a, there is a funding formula that's based on a number of factors. And it calls the percentage that the provider has to contribute to, to change from grant to grant, county to county. But yes, there's participation there. The BEED program, I do know, requires a 25% investment minimum by the provider. That's a 25% minimum investment by the provider. So the upcoming program for those remaining 4,300 locations will require at least a 25% investment by the provider. Now, there will be, let me caveat that a bit. There will be some locations that are extremely high cost. And there is a definition of extreme high cost. And that does allow for grant dollars to contribute a higher percentage in those extreme high-cost locations. Quite frankly, there are some locations in this state, I'm not saying there's any in Johnston County that fit this, but there are some locations in the state that could run $50,000 to $100,000 to get fiber to. And, and that's, quite frankly, that's where an alternative technology is probably the best use of, best use of funds.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Steve, tell me again, by the end of this year, fiber is where? Is it just those particular areas or whole county or?
So, no. So by the end of this year, you, there should be an approved award for all locations in the county. So that means there is a, they're, they're either served by fiber or there is a funding mechanism to bring fiber to all locations. So, and assuming the BEED program comes with a 24-month build requirement, you could essentially see universal coverage pretty much year-end, 2027.
Right. The road I live on is two miles long, north of Selma. It empties onto 301. How do we, is there an opportunity to provide feedback or input? We've been missed so far. How do we keep from being missed?
Well, again, the BEED program is designed to get us to universal coverage. So theoretically, you should be covered in, in that program. So as I mentioned earlier, the NTIA has put a really compressed schedule in front of us where they expect states to make award announcements by September 4th, I believe, is the date that NTIA, excuse me, that NCDIT, North Carolina Department of Information Technology, needs to make awards. So should be included there. Now, are there going to be locations in the state that some providers simply do not bid on? The answer to that question is yes. Inevitably, there will be some of those locations. The North Carolina Department of Technology, though, they do have the ability to negotiate with providers to, to close those doughnut holes, if you will. So if there are locations that are missed, they will come back to the provider whom they believe makes the most sense to serve it and negotiate a price tag for doing so. Now, with this latest NTIA announcement, there is going to certainly be quite a bit of involvement from fixed wireless and satellite. And I am not a fixed wireless or satellite expert. We are a fiber company, fiber exclusive. So I can't tell you exactly how that will work insofar as those high-cost locations. But inevitably, there's going to be locations in the state that do need to be served with an alternative technology, alternative to fiber.
Sure.
But yes, you should see by end of this year, a plan in place that will get us to universal coverage here in this county.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I had one, and this may be asking a lot, but, but, start of this year, there were a certain number of folks who didn't have fiber. End of, end of this year, how many new folks will have fiber service that we, that didn't have it, that doesn't have it currently?
So the answer to that is twofold. The 35,000 locations, or a bit over 35,000 locations that we are building using our own private investment dollars, some of those don't have access to fiber today. They may have access to an alternative technology that meets the definition of, that meets the federal government's definition of broadband, which is the 100 by 20. But many of those will come online this year. And then the Great Grant program, that's the, the green dots that you see on the screen, those are largely scheduled to be delivered by end of year or very, very early first quarter. Now, the, the yellow dots, as I said, they come with a deadline of year-end 2026. Again, I did speak to the construction supervisor this morning. They are hoping to bring those online by third quarter of next year, sometime during the third quarter of next year.
So following up on that, how would homeowners know if it was coming to the area, if it was there? Is there a website they can go to?
Yeah, actually, NCDIT has a website. It's called the Broadband Status Map, Broadband Status Map. So if you, if you go out to NCDIT's website, it's, it's not terribly difficult to locate. And you can actually put in your home address. That home address, or entering your home address will give you a number of different statuses. If you're served already, it will just simply say "served." That's it. That means you meet the definition today of, of the federal government's definition of broadband with at least 100 by 20. If there has been a grant awarded, so if you are one of the yellow dots, for example, it will say CAB 2.0. And it will tell you what company it's been awarded to. You've actually, to my knowledge, you've had two different providers receive a CAB award, ours being the largest by a significant margin. But if you're one of those 1,439 yellow dots, it will indicate CAB 2.0. And that Brightspeed is your provider. And then at the bottom, it will give you a, a project completion date. I don't think it goes down to the exact date. It may say like December 2023, for example. So you can get that information there. If you don't have service and there has not been a grant associated with your location, it will just simply say "unserved." And that means it's one of those last 4,300 that will be considered as part of this upcoming BEED round that's coming up.
Okay.
But it's, I use that map honestly.
No, that's good information.
I use it pretty much every day.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just ask if our PO staff can make sure we get that on, on there so folks could check that out.
Yep. Broadband Status Map. It's a very, very good tool. You guys had an award here, again, another provider, last seven to 10 days. Those, those may not be up there yet, but they're very, NCDIT is very good about updating that map. They should be there in fairly short.
Good.
Really good tool. I use, like I said, I use it about every day in my job.
All right. Anything else?
I had another question. So I know you were saying that this is mainly fiber. So in case there's any confusion with the fiber being different than the telephone provider service, correct?
So we acquired the assets that date back to the days of Carolina telephone.
Right. Right.
Okay. So, you know, from that perspective, to some degree, we're the, you know, we're the ILEC, the incumbent local exchange carrier. So we're the telephone company there. And most of our landline phones that continue to exist today are carried on the old copper network. Now, as we build out all of these 35,000 locations, and then we will begin providing in our industry, just full of acronyms, POTS, Plain Old Telephone Service. We actually have a POTS app today, Plain Old Telephone Service app today, in conjunction with a third party. But here, later this year, very early next year, we're going to be offering that directly from us. And when that happens, we will begin transitioning those customers who have the landline telephone service still over to fiber.
Okay.
It is a far, far more reliable product. We can often tell, generally speaking, we can tell if there is an issue before customers even aware of that. So we will begin that process, and ultimately, the copper network is going to get retired. We will not maintain two networks forever.
Okay. I just know that we've had to do several updates, and PIO staff has done a great job of letting customers know that we've had customers without the landline service being able to dial 911. And so I was just trying to let those people know that their service has been interrupted. Hopefully, in the next little bit, they'll get new and improved phone lines.
As we build more and more fiber, again, certainly as we conclude the building of everything that you see on the map there, we, and then, like I said, our, I call it an app, our Plain Old Telephone Service app, we will begin transitioning customers. You know, today, some customers can do that on their own, but ultimately, we will go through a transition process. Because, I mean, quite frankly, we simply won't maintain two networks forever.
All right. Anything else?
I did want to just make sure we recognize we had an email from Mr. Denning from Benson concerned about the internet being out, and with us awarding, or with you guys being one of our main providers, they were just concerned about the lack of internet, internet not being restored for over a week in their community. So I just wanted to make sure we did recognize that.
If you want to provide this specific address to Mr. Hester, and he can get it to me, I will certainly look into it.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you for all that information.
All right. Mr. Brewer, thank you. We'll have you see you in about three months or four months for an update. Yeah, we'll get you on the schedule, regular schedule.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is 5A, is the presentation from Northside Fire Chief. Actually, are you going to start, Mr. Driver? Ryan, you going to pick that up?
Tag team.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you again for allowing us to address the board tonight. And thank you so much for adding this to the agenda on behalf of Northside Fire and Rescue. I'll make sure I had something to look at. So Northside Fire Rescue was established in 2022 when Archery Lodge and Thanksgiving Fire Department merged together, and that has been a very successful endeavor on their behalf. Shortly thereafter, Chief Driver come to me, and I have Chief Driver here with me tonight. He come to me and said, hey, as we start planning for the future, we need to start evaluating some future fire station locations. So we evaluated a number of those. And here, we have a piece that they want us to look at currently. During that process in 2023, we did look at a piece that we'll look at in just a few minutes. It was possibly 2,000 feet east. So a lot of the maps that were generated tonight were generated at that time when we were looking at that parcel, 2,000 feet east, excuse me, 2,000 feet west of this location. So I just wanted to preface that. Some of the information may be a little bit dated, but I feel that it is pertinent to the conversation tonight. But for tonight, right here, we have a 9.6 acre tract of land, and Northside Fire Rescue is interested in purchasing 2.2 acres of this. So this track will be divided up into four different sub-tracks, and they're looking at a 2.2 acre track of that. This lot would be build-ready to include sewer and water already on site in preparation for a new building, if awarded by the board, and later on in the timeline when it's time to build a fire station at that location. In other preparations for other projects, GIS created this map for emergency services. This is a map that shows the population densities of Johnston County based off of NFPA 1720. And 1720 is deployment of fire suppression operations to the public by volunteer fire departments. We use this as we are aiding in visual representations for discussing effective response forces, and this has been used quite a bit amongst the Fire Commission. But the purpose of the map tonight is to notate, if you don't mind zooming in a little bit on the, there we go, perfect. If we can notate the red area around the Flowers Crossroads, if we notate this red area around Flowers Crossroads, this is the area that Chief Driver is looking to serve with a future fire station in this area. If you'll see, he's got it surrounded by Archery Lodge Station, Thanksgiving Station, and then we have Clayton Fire Station Two over to the west of it. However, this is one of the most densely populated areas in Johnston County, as I'm sure you're all well aware. And based on some information that Chief Driver is going to share in a little while, we are about 50% build-out here according to already approved houses within the planned use development around Flowers. So this area is going to continue to become much redder as the population density increases in that area. If you can go to slide three. Perfect. You can zoom in on that also. So, that's good. So when Chief Driver asked us to come look at multiple fire station locations, you'll see many red dots around here. And these are all locations that we looked at for Chief Driver in 2023. Here on the north side of the area, here on the south. But these two areas closest to the 44, 42 corridor was most highlighted here within our discussions at the time. If you remember, last year, permission was granted to Northside Fire Rescue, Fire Rescue to purchase some land for a future fire station. At that time, we also highlighted that while this was not achievable at the time due to the parcel of land that we looked at, we did have a, emergency services did highlight the need for a fire station in this area based off the call volume that we'll see here shortly. But to the map at hand, we see a conglomeration of colors. The two that I want to highlight currently, pink, that is what we use to show engine company deployment from existing fire stations. That pink is where a fire truck can travel on road miles within one and a half miles from the fire station. And we designate this with, by the engine companies. An engine company, it has less road miles because it takes more fire engines to fill fire suppression duties, and they're also utilized across many, many call types, and they have a higher call volume. And so we utilize this in the ISO rating schedule. So we need a, we need more engines around these fire districts than we do service companies. And those service companies are highlighted by yellow. So this is how quick, or this is how far that we can get a service company within two and a half miles. So one and a half for engine companies and two and a half for service companies is the most effective ratio that we can have within the ISO rating schedule. And this also helps with the deployment of certain resources and personnel to, to the areas that are needed. So as you'll see, with the two current fire stations, we are not hitting some of the most densely populated area in the Northside Fire Rescue territory.
So, Mr. Par, before you leave that, some of those, could you identify some of those other roads? I got 42, you got that one, but?
Yes, okay.
Just so.
So, now, Chief Driver, you might have to help me out. This is more your territory. So right along here, we have Buffalo Road.
Okay.
And then, this is actually Portofino area, if I'm not failing to mistake, and then Tuscany just to the east, and then San Marino to the north of it.
Okay.
Is that?
And is that 39 out there where the other station, you mentioned the other station?
That's 96.
96, okay.
Yes, 96 and 42.
Okay.
39 will be in it.
39, right at the edge of the edge.
Yeah, 39 over here.
Okay.
Any other?
All right.
Okay. Next slide, please. All right, and we'll zoom in again. Yes, please. And scroll down. All right. So up here, we evaluated two stations for them. We're not going to pay any attention to this at the time because it's not the topic of discussion now. But this red, the darkest red parcel here is an area or a parcel that we looked at within the Portofino subdivision. And as you'll see, we changed the color so that we can better access, better illustrate what we're looking at. So here, the burgundy or purple color is now the engine company. So this is the area that we can get within one and a half miles of that proposed parcel. The blue is the service company, so your ladder trucks and rescues. So we're, so we're able to cover a lot more territory than what we were with just these two fire stations, naturally. We do have a little overlap here as far as Station Two and Station One's service company deployment, but this is also where they have the most heavily populated commercial industry in their district. So I think that would be a great benefit to citizens and the Northside's deployment model. So this is what their ISO map would look like with three fire stations. We would cover a great deal more area with staffed units. And when I say staffed units, Chief Driver and I have already spoke about when the time comes to build a fire station, it would be expected to be staffed companies, and Chief Driver is 100% on board with that. Any questions before we move to the next exhibit? Okay. So this is a heat map of a number of calls that was, that was operated on by Northside Fire Rescue. And this was taken from January 1st, 2022, when they incorporated into Northside, to about August 2024. That's when we switched records management systems, and we would, we could actually access this heat mapping data out of the first records management system. But it, the trend has been going the same. So this is, this is a visual representation of about 4,650 incidents that occurred within those little more than 18-month time period. And you'll see, we're starting to pop up with some red here in the Portofino and Tuscany area and San Marino. And if you will remind me what's the next one to the west?
Magnolia.
It's another.
Magnolia.
Magnolia Village. So this is another heavily populated area. And what we, what we know is, as the population density increases, the demand of services of specialty fire and rescue also increase in these areas. So naturally, where we have the commercial area, that's naturally going to increase. But this is the most densely populated areas within, densely populated residential areas within their fire district. And if you will scroll over, it takes the green away so that they can see it based off the road. So again, here, Portofino, Tuscany, and San Marino, and Magnolia Village here. In summary, from emergency services, when we looked at this area in particular in spring of 2023, there was a recommendation for support of a future fire station. And based on two years later, increased population density, increased call volume, that recommendation is still here from emergency services. I will let Chief Driver speak on the particulars of his department. He does have some call, call times from get from these, these individual stations to the areas in question. But before I turn the floor over to him, is there any questions on behalf of emergency services?
Any questions?
I have a question. I understand you'd say that the need of this fire station is driven by the density of residential development primarily in this area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other area of the county that is equivalent to, or more dense than what we're seeing here?
Probably the, the most comparable area would be the Mecklemore area, and that's served by the Cleveland Fire Department. They already have three fire stations. I see the potential for 5210 to get there at some point. It's not as dense over there, but there is a lot of area to be developed in that area, and they are served by three fire stations also.
And none of these areas are incorporated?
No.
As towns?
Correct.
Even though they have town-level density?
Correct. And that is something that's very unique. Can we go back up to the population density map? I'm glad you said that. So you will see everywhere that it is red, other than Mecklemore, which is another oddity. Mecklemore does have urbanized population density along with Northside, and those are the unincorporated areas. All of our other red except for here, which is Riverwood, we see more dense population densities within the municipal areas.
Mm-hmm. My concern is that we seem to have a lot of areas in our county that, that have densities, in some cases, more than a lot of our towns, yet they have no town taxing structure to pay for the services that people expect to live in these, these virtual towns. And so I think a point I'm making here is that we're having to add quite a bit of emergency services to, and that's being put on the backs of all the taxpayers in the county as opposed to the people who live in their respective area because they have no taxation structure for their, because there's no incorporation. And I think that is, that is problematic because it puts, as I said, an inordinate burden on the county that should be borne in part by incorporated taxing structure.
Yeah.
The immediate neighborhoods.
Any other?
Any questions, comments? All right.
I will turn the podium over to Chief Philip Driver.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Mister, y'all know I'm asking for a lot tonight, and I know that. And I was told when I come, I need to do a little homework and have some documents to support it. So if I can pass these out?
Actually, if you want to give them to our deputy clerk, she can pass them out, and you can, you can keep going. How about that?
Basically, what that is to say, and we have looked at seven locations before we come to this one. So currently, we're here because all of those were already taken or not for sale. What we're looking for today is a 2.2 acre site with water and sewer. It is expensive, about $550,000 an acre. I think what we need to look at, though, that's not really the acre, per acre price because the site development is done. So there's going to be no.
Have you got another?
I'm good.
I'm sorry, I didn't pitch you one.
I'll give you one.
I've got one. So there's a whole lot of that cost is in site development and water and sewer. When you break that out and kind of compare it to what some of the land in the areas going for, it's crazy. I mean, we've got several spots over there, $300,000 a acre, 330. We looked at a site, like I say, seven of them, and I've listed them out. If you want me to waste the time and go through them, or let you kind of browse through them, I'll be glad to ask you any questions.
I'm browsing.
I know you.
Yeah, I'm browsing.
And I want you to.
I appreciate the information.
Have you got a number you could associate with the site work that's been done?
Currently, the site work hasn't, but if we had to do it, I'm being told we're looking at about $500,000 of site work and put the infrastructure in. And also, on the back of this, I attached the land that was for sale for comparisons around the area. When you look at the property on 42 where we need a fire station, there's only two lots left that would be available. This one, and then there's a two-acre track right behind the Publix, but they want $2 million for that, so I couldn't ask for that one. million dollars for that, so I couldn't ask for that one.
I have a question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
You talked about building a satellite station, which would be smaller than maybe the normal station. Would it be appropriate or possible to do it on a one-acre site?
No, sir, not in Putt City. Everything with.
I mean, on the, on the proposed site with sewer water, could you get by with one acre there?
If I had one acre, I could, but the problem with it is they won't break it up into two tracks.
Couldn't sell it, they might.
No, sir. Well, I think they've got their plan approved for the four lots.
Now, is water and sewer being made available if this lot, these two lots are bought?
Yes, sir, water and sewer is available for these. They come with that. And just kind of to hit on some of the response times, Ryan will start me off. I pulled these from this year, the Portofino area. If we go at nine o'clock in the morning, you're looking at a eight-minute response time. Not terrible, considering how far it is. If you go at five o'clock in the afternoon, you're looking at thirteen minutes, five seconds. In the Tuscany area, over morning at seven o'clock, you got a nine-minute response time. If you go at midnight, you got a eight-minute response time. The traffic is what's killing us. On an average, anything in the Portofino subdivision is a nine-minute response time.
And that would be coming from Station Two?
That's coming from Station One and Station Two because it's split. Both stations respond. And it makes no difference either way. In the afternoon, it's easier to come to Station One because of the traffic on forty-two.
So again, where on, on this track you're showing is the? You can use the magic pointer.
I thought I had. Okay, right here will be a two-story mini storage indoor. Then it would be the fire station. Then it would be a Valvoline oil change and a Spuds car wash. Will be the four things there. And the good thing about it, it's all commercial development, so we're not interrupting nobody in the subdivision. That's been some of my concerns with the other locations. They didn't want it in a subdivision. They didn't want to hear the noise. They're going to hear the noise regardless because they're traveling down the highway. But they think because having a fire station in a neighborhood, there's going to be a lot of noise.
And what would it say that, would it be a, would you have your own access out onto forty-two?
Basically, what it is, there'd be two accesses. There's an access right here and an access right here. There will be a little street in between, so you'll be set off of forty-two. But the interest that's coming off of forty-two is dead in line with the fire station. So we would turn in, come straight, circle the building, pull in the bay, drive right back out to bay, straight across.
Now, do they have a, a light like Clayton's Station Two?
Not at this current time because I reached out to DOT to talk to them, and because we don't own anything, they won't talk to me. All he did tell me was, he said, there's provisions that you can cut medians out, stuff like that down the road once you get the land. I do know if we put any kind of light, it's got to match the black stoplights in the Flowers plant.
Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking of the yellow blinker light that they have outside of Clayton's Fire Station Two.
To stop traffic.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add a couple of things, and I, I'll depend on the Chief Driver and Ryan to, to support this because I, I've been out of this business for a while. But it, it's not just as simple as finding a vacant lot to put a fire station. You can cause yourself more problems by changing the, the density around the stations. And of course, if you're in a municipal situation, you count hydrants and fifty percent exceed. I mean, there's a whole formula that goes into it. But I just say all that to say that it's, it's very specific on what's going to be beneficial to, to split that area and provide a response that's timely. And in the service company response and the engine company response, it's important to remember that those are, those are important for those folks. If you're sitting there waiting ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen minutes, that's a long time if you have a real crisis. If you've got a house fire, if you've got a medical emergency, wow, you know, five minutes is a long time, but thirteen minutes, twelve minutes, that's a lot. So I think, you know, with the traffic situation like it is, I mean, I think, you know, putting a station in a high-density area seems to certainly make good sense. And I, I would, I appreciate y'all taking the time to look at multiple locations. But, you know, I've said many times before, just because somebody's got a vacant lot they're willing to sell, it does not necessarily make it a, a great location for a fire station. So thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a drawing that was given to me with how it looks, but.
Okay.
It hasn't been published yet, so I'll pass.
You just take that, give it to our deputy clerk there. All right.
That way you can see it.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Driver or Mr. Parker?
No, I definitely would love to see the, the egress that you were speaking of. I think that was my only concern with it being such a highly, heavily traveled, highly populated area. Anytime you put a fire department or something for emergency services in the middle of a retailed traffic space, that was just my biggest concern was how was that going to work with trying to get out?
Well, the technology does exist to where the fire station can signal the stoplights to turn red and stop all the traffic. There's, there's actually an opticon system that, that you can, you can trigger that from the station when they go out on a call.
Town of Clayton's running that now.
Yeah, yeah. And it's actually very beneficial in areas where there's high traffic volume to do that.
About how many calls? I know some of the data that y'all shared was from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, whenever they merged, which was really great and helpful. About how many calls, though, last year from just in the growth of three years has Station One and Station Two experienced?
We've had twenty-eight percent growth in the last four years of calls.
What's your total call volume, Chief?
Eighteen seventy-one last year.
Eighteen hundred and seventy-one times people had a need for Northside Fire Department.
It's hard to believe when you look at, you know, we're running fourth in the county with no city limits, no I forty, ninety-five. All ours is at the homes.
To me, Mr. Chairman, it's commendable that these guys, the emergency management and Chief Driver are, are driving this thing. But I'm concerned that there's no representatives here from Flowers, there's no representative from Portofino, Tuscany, the people that, that have a stake in this and say, hey, this is needed, we want it. We, we fear for our situation if we don't have it. And that makes me suspect of the whole thing, you know?
I have a story that can justify a person being here. So two weeks ago, there was a wreck in front of our house, which is right there on Buffalo Road, which is in the gray area of Station One and Station Two. And it was at six-thirty in the afternoon. So what do you think traffic was like? It was very heavily congested. It took us an hour to get to our house. And at that time, that was Engine One that responded. I have family that lives less than two miles from Station One on Cover Bridge, so on the other part of the, the district. If they had a medical emergency or a fire, Station Two would have been having to go to their house for their need. And it probably would have taken thirteen to fifteen minutes, like Commissioner Harris was talking about, for them to have a fire truck or EMS come to their rescue. And that's concerning whenever they live less than two miles from Station One. Whenever you're having to deploy resources and then having to sort calls from nine-one-one to telecommunications, everything, it puts a strain on it. Whenever that, that wreck blocked Buffalo, so no one was going any direction. So people were having to go Murphy Road, they were going Jordan Naren. I mean, it was a whole cluster for about an hour and a half from five-thirty to about seven, seven-thirty at, on a Wednesday. And but, I mean, that's not the only instance. I mean, there's a wreck all the time. And whenever those fire trucks are blocking the road to perform life-saving duties and having to wait for a tow truck, Highway Patrol to get there, they now can't respond to another call of someone that's in need. And so a third station is needed in this area.
Commissioner Godwin, to your point, some of them from Flowers was planning to be here, but we didn't know if we were going to be here, so I didn't notify. But the Flowers crowd was, but the rest of them, I didn't think you wanted them here. I don't think they'd be in support, not the support you wanted. Also, we just, we have got plans and enough room for EMS unit to go in this. I didn't say that earlier, but that was another reason we needed a little bigger piece of land so we could have that option.
I'm all, I'm all for supporting the fire service. They're, they're great. Everything's great about that. I, I just have a real hard time with a million dollars for a piece of land.
Notwithstanding the need, which I think obviously the comments have demonstrated there's a need, but why have we got ourselves into this situation where the tail is wagging a dog here that we're having to go out and spend exorbitant amounts of money to put fire protection in, in these areas that, that otherwise, that's what our development policy has led to this. We've got, I've been up in the past that area quite a bit. I know you go up there on, at Cleveland, at, not Cleveland, but Archer's Lodge in the evening. And I have sat at a stoplight, stop sign up there at Castleberry Road for nearly twenty minutes trying to get out and turn right. I'm not, I'm going left just to turn right. And finally, somebody stopped and let me out. And I'll be honest with you, that, that is a, that's not the type of quality of life that our citizens want in this county. But it's, it's driving this, and the fact that we don't have municipal taxing structure out here to help compensate for this cost is, is really creating a burden on, on our citizens. Prices of land is, what's the total price of both acres? Total price?
One point one million.
One point one million. Do we have any kind of appraisal that, that validates that number?
All I can tell you is what it sold for around, and every piece of land went around Flowers for a million dollars an acre, this commercial. I hadn't any type of appraisal or anything.
So that particular piece has not had a formal appraisal on it, just based upon land in the vicinity?
Yes, sir.
Your comments about who would come tonight was kind of interesting. Is, is the Flowers development folks in favor of this?
Yes, sir.
Fire station? I would thank you, given the fact that, that, that whole development was given special dispensation, that they did not have to incorporate and impose taxes on their residents, that they'd be a little more receptive to trying to work with the county to try to make the expenditure a little more palpable to the citizens. But that's just my opinion, and obviously, they can do what they want because they're, they're a private business concern. I agree with Mr. Godwin, one point one million dollars for this site has, that's a hard pill to swallow, particularly without, I would like to have a formal appraisal, I'll be honest with you. I'd like to have something, if we're going to spend that kind of public money, something that validates that that is a realistic and reasonable price for that particular parcel right there. Like I say, it may come back, there's worth more, but, but then you've got something you can show the citizens that before we spent over a million dollars of taxpayers' money, we've got something to, to show that it's, it's realistic.
Yes, sir. Don't have appraisal. All I do know is if I want to say yes, the next man is, and there's two more sitting awaiting.
Yeah. Let me ask you a little question. I was looking over some of the financial information from the past year, and it seems that there was a land purchase about a north side.
Yes, sir.
Is that another fire station site?
That's on Highway ninety-six and Dunn Road. We purchased that last year so we don't end up in this situation again, and there's no land to be bought.
Is that station planned after this one or before?
After, way after. When I come last year and asked for that, we wanted this, but there was no land available. And if we didn't get it now, is it going to be there in five years, ten years when it's needed?
Yeah. But that location is not going to fulfill this need if you choose to build there first.
That would get rid of some six-mile district that we have in another department that has, borders us over there.
What does that half, semicircle below that tract right there?
That's the track of Portofino.
Horse race track, okay. I'm sure they're going to love them lights and sirens. Yeah.
As much as we stay over there, they love us. If you're the one in need, it's the best sounding in the world. We actually do a lot with them with their horse riding events. Stand by.
So let me, let me, and this may be more of a question for Mr. Parker. You'd mentioned the priority for them, but will this actually be prioritized by the county once we do the station location study and figure out across the county where the, the most urgent need is for, for stations?
Absolutely. I, I fully expect that to be highlighted within the fire station location study. And talking about prioritizing needs while we're here in this situation, I will give credit to, to Northside Fire and Rescue. They have done a tremendous job at prioritizing staffing and getting staffed units on, within their fire stations to be able to combat this high call volume. And you have an engine at both stations and a service company at one station. So he, he is doing everything he can to combat the high call volume that their citizens are facing. And while it would be very easy to, to show the numbers to what it would take to add another unit, if we don't, to Chief, or excuse me, Commissioner Harris's point, if we don't add another unit within the right location, we just, we create a bigger problem than what we already have. It would be very easy for him to stand up another fire truck within a fire station that he already has, but it, it's not, it's not going to get to the citizens any quicker than what it is now.
Is that largely due to traffic volume on forty-two?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Traffic forty-two. And then as we build these subdivisions, it creates additional travel time because we have to go deeper off the main road. We have smaller streets to contend with, we have parking issues to contend with, multiple left-hand turns, that adds time to it. So yes, what he's dealing with is not just a forty-two issue, but it's a density issue within the subdivisions.
Speed bumps, gates?
Yes, all of those things. We've, we've, we've done a tremendous amount of work, thank you, within the Fire Marshal's Office with the gates, trying to make sure that they have entrances in there, siren activation, knockbox backups, to make sure that the people are receiving the quickest care possible.
Well, I hate to tell you this, but there's legislation moving through the General Assembly right now. It started out as House Bill seven sixty-five, and just about every local government in the state has tried to beat that back. But it basically would strip zoning authority away from local governments and force every local government to allow up to six units per acre without question and must serve a water and sewer. We would have no discretion about what goes where. Well, that's popped back up in another bill now, Senate Bill two oh five, that was originally two pages to regulate swimming pools. After it went over to the House, there was a committee over there that ran, that couldn't get seven sixty-five through, and they added seventeen more pages to it to put the same provisions that were rejected in House Bill seven sixty-five and Senate Bill two oh five to do the exact same thing. So they're looking for a backdoor way to push it through, and it's going to be disastrous for local governments. We will have to put six units, five to six units per acre everywhere without, without discretion.
And I just had to kind of add, not to that, but to this discussion. This PUD was approved twenty-plus years ago, so the county approving anything in there that was happening. We lost any opportunity, you know, when that happened. So the things that are going in there, the ones, the things that you mentioned aren't county decisions and the subdivisions aren't either, yep.
And I'd like to also add to that as well as all the lots that are coming live now. So in the very back lots, as well as in different areas of the PUD, did not have to be approved by the planning board that are going in now because they were all considered part of the PUD twenty-plus years ago. So that is also something that is. Yep.
Okay.
So that's also thirty years ago. So that's also something to consider is whenever all the new lots that have been approved in District One, which has been almost over a thousand in the past four years, that does not include any of the lots that are being added by Flowers Plantation.
We're reaping the, the consequences of that thirty-year-old decision now.
And the truth of the matter is, Chief Driver didn't approve a single one of those, but he's charged with protecting.
He's got a stack.
Later hand, I was dead. He's trying to protect him, so that's, that's what it boils down to.
Chief Driver, have y'all done any type of, I guess, communication or survey of local landowners, is anybody who's more civic-minded and is willing to offer enough land out for a fire station over the Flowers?
There is no land on Highway forty-two that will meet these needs, other than this parcel, and the parcel that's behind Publix.
But it has to have frontage on forty-two, it can't be just off of it?
There's nothing off of it.
Okay.
Motorcycle roads built out, Ushere Parkway, South Murphy Road is built out. That's the only two roads that touch in the district.
To Chief.
I answered anything, it's all good.
If we start going west too far, then we start encroaching on Clayton Fire Station Two. And so that's when we get into the issue of inappropriately located fire stations and the deployment analysis. It doesn't do any benefit to Northside, it doesn't do any due diligence to Clayton, so.
Chief, let me ask you one other question, and you probably know it off the top of your head. How many times do you get layered calls where you're second, third, fourth duty crew? How many times do you get layered calls where you got second, third, fourth duty crew? Cause you get your crews out here...
So far this year, we've had 121 overlapping calls.
So 121 times, their crews are out on a call and another call comes in. So you think about that. Where's that other call response gonna come from?
Yep. That's my point from what happened two weeks ago.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly like what you're talking about.
That's halfway a year.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot.
Well, that might drive my point. We need to do what we can to quit facilitating these conditions occurring and it comes largely from our development policies that have been in place for the last, uh, uh, two decades. Can you, school capacity, road capacity, none of that is given enough due consideration and allowing high-density, uh, subdivisions to go in.
I think that's what we hope to address. We've got the land use plan now, hopefully with the ordinances coming on, uh, in hopefully a few months, we'll have, we'll have those...
Yeah, hopefully. We'll have some more tools in the toolbox.
Yeah.
Provided the General Assembly doesn't say otherwise.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a real possibility that can happen.
Which, which would help the overall situation, but as the old folks say, in that area, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube.
No, you can't.
It's there and we've got to learn, we gotta figure out a way to protect it.
But we've got a whole lot of other locations going in that way.
I was gonna say, you go to that heat map and, you know, we've got a, a lot of those in unincorporated areas, so...
Yep.
We have a number of virtual towns in this county that, uh, that are drain on the public resources.
Absolutely.
All right, like, so you, your request, and I guess this board, uh, has to approve, and we're talking about spending, giving them approval to spend money that is in their...
Their account.
Their account, not, it's not...
Only financially, we haven't made a pay for it.
And then I would, I would just say, uh, to, I appreciate you, you providing the information. I know when we had an earlier conversation, I'd said, bring your A-game and bring us some stuff. So I think the information you provided was, uh, very helpful in, in, in taking a look at that. And I think Commissioner Godwin had made a trip out there and had, had looked. So, uh, I think, uh, you know, unfortunately, we're left with, uh, we, we've got what we got, while, while I wish we had an appraisal, uh, to, to function with. I'm, and I did not ask this, but what is the timeframe? I know you mentioned somebody else, you mentioned the next one or two, but what is the timeframe that you're looking at?
Probably the first, uh, oh, excuse me, the end of July will be when we close on it.
And what, is there a, another deadline that's making this a, we need to make a decision tonight?
Where they're closing on it currently, try, I'll tell you wrong. Track West Development is who is purchasing the land, is doing this development. They're closing on, I think, the 25th of this month and then we would be closing on it the next month.
All right. All right, Rick, did you have something to...
Just a slight sidebar, but I, I do wanna say how much I appreciate the fire departments in Northside helping out with our EMS and having co-locations. You know, over the years, we've gone from a EMS system that was primarily nonprofits to consolidate and it is a county responsibility in North Carolina. So, uh, their assistance with that is, is very important and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Could I add one more comment, please? Um, yeah, uh, first of all, Chief Driver, thank you for all the information. Um, it is, uh, being from the eastern part of the county is, is amazing. We almost live in two different worlds, um, from the east to the west and, uh, 1.1 million dollars is, is shocking, shocking for a two-acre parcel of land. Um, the only thing I would just point out that was a little bit bothersome from your comments was that the, uh, the lack of, um, uh, the lack of will for this to be located near a residential area, the very residents that we're trying to protect. They don't wanna give up their land because they're afraid that it may be some bothersome. And that, that to me was just a little bit bothersome when the, the rest of the counties tend to have to pay the, the 1.1 million dollars, so...
And it's not the residents that's wanting to give up their land. It's they don't want the noise. They've moved there, they don't want that noise to bother them.
Agreed. That's what, that's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. That's my point exactly.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, thank you for all the information and for being so forward-thinking in trying to go ahead and secure a location. You already, you know, secured one, but being able to be so forward-thinking, um, just from 2022 when all this was happening to, even though it's three years later, just being so forward-thinking of trying to provide that service to the citizens in the area. I know, I greatly appreciate it.
And, and I guess I had a, in the weeds question. I'm assuming that somebody, whether it's the Track West or whoever, has had some due diligence performed at Phase One done and I did, did you have, did you get a copy of that?
I have the map where they have, is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 I'm talking about where they went through and looked at it and, and looked from an environmental standpoint.
Oh, he has no environmental access.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, I would say, uh, it ought to be relatively easy for you to get a, a reliance letter from whoever did that, assuming it's within the right timeframe to take a look at and make sure you can get your hands on that.
They're supposed to have everything. Right now, what I'm doing is committing to buy it and then once they close, they will submit everything to us, all the documentation we request and all that.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna say, make sure we get that, uh, in our, in our hands, not that I expect there's any issues out there.
I was there before we wrapped it up.
Yeah, absolutely. And then one, I just wanna make one clarification, as we're talking about who's paying for this, the, the money that they have came from the residents in that fire district. It didn't come from many other parts of the county. It came from the residents within that fire district.
That won't be the case going forward, though.
That is correct. That is correct. Yeah, I, I was thinking, as I was thinking, that's what I thought, okay, this is money that came in under the...
Old system.
Old system. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? And you're looking for us to approve moving forward with the purchase? All right.
I make a motion.
All right.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, request to purchase land about Northside Fire and Rescue. Uh, any other discussion?
I have a, go ahead. Well, Chief Driver, I wanna say thank you. You brought your A-game tonight. You're counting a box in terms of options and I understand that. Uh, it doesn't make me feel any better about paying this kind of money and, and the lack of civic involvement by the landowners out there is, is also disturbing. Uh, you know, the development out there is what drove this need, but, uh, uh, so they, they're, they're contributing to this. So I will most likely hold my nose and vote for this, but that's a lot of money for this site. It hurts my heart to say this because you and your team has done a great job and continue to. But it would seem, you know, I keep thinking, what would happen if this land gets away and it's sold to somebody else? What would happen? I mean, what happens then? They don't have it out there. What's the citizens gonna do? I mean, Chief Driver's done his job and so is emergency medical. What are they gonna do? You know, they do, they'll do what the citizens in 1959 and 60 throughout Johnston County. They'll organize and create a remedy. Um, I will support $500,000 for site for a fire station. I cannot go above that. If they could arrange one acre of it, and I would think there's where the civic engagement, local people, if they want a fire station there and can subdivide that, make it happen. But I can't support more than a half million dollars.
All right, any other comments? I, I would, uh, just to, I wanna say to be fair to the people who aren't here, uh, we just added this to the agenda, uh, at the start of the meeting, so it's not like this has been available for, for, so that's, you know, that's not, the people aren't all to blame because we didn't get that out there. But, uh, I agree that this was something that I lived in, in Portofino or Tuscany or San Marino, that I would, I would be wanting to, to have as fast a response time as I could have and at least send, you know, some information on it. But, uh, any other comments before we take the vote?
The, the, uh, one thing that you said, Chairman, uh, was that the, uh, fire tax collected that would be paying for this was during, in the old system, was not the countywide fire tax, it was this district fire tax. So that was, uh, that was something I needed here.
I, I would say that was, that is probably the deciding factor for me, that it is being paid for out of dollars that was collected within that district.
They're locally, so...
Yeah.
If I could clarify too, and I, and I seconded, uh, Commissioner, um...
Davey.
You know, I have talked to her like seven times this week, but I, you know, I'm sorry.
And it's Monday.
And it's Monday, so I apologize. But, you know, the, the point is, I think all of us agree that that is a, that is a tremendous amount of money to pay for property, but I, I don't find another option. I mean, he's saddled with the responsibility to provide protection for those people. Where's he gonna do that from? In the days of them organizing their own fire department in a crossroad somewhere, that's just not gonna happen. And so I, I think, you know, it's not worth someone losing their life over or losing their, their property. I can tell you, I've, I've run a many, many emergency calls in my career and never once have I had a person complain about the cost of the truck, the defibrillator, the ambulance. If their grandmother's laying on the floor, gasping for air, they don't complain about the cost of equipment. They're just glad to have the best there and your department does an extraordinary job and you save a lot of lives on property and I commend you and your folks for doing that. And I, I think we need to move on with this. I don't see where they got another option.
Well, and I'm just gonna piggyback on what you said. You can't put a dollar amount on, on people's lives and their, their safety. And, and I shared the same issues with the price of it, didn't mind digging as much as I could in the real estate world to figure everything that had sold and anything that may be available. And at the end of the day, there was nothing within this immediate heat map of where the, the need is. And so, you know, I share the same heartburn over the costs, but at the end of the day, I feel like if we were to poll each one of those residents that, that spent those tax dollars, they would agree that it, their safety is, is more important than extra money in the bank of the fire department.
And this will serve people for 50 years to come, or more to come.
Do we ever run into a situation where it's too high?
And thank you again for all of your diligence on...
What is too high? Three million, four million?
Yeah.
All right.
Chief, could I, could I ask the chief one more question, please? Real quick.
We had a call, well, let's call the question, let's move on. I think we're, we're good.
So no?
No.
Okay.
Let's, let's move on.
That's fine.
All right, all those in favor, I'm gonna do this by a hand count, I think here, just to make sure. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of the land, uh, please raise your right hand. All right, all those opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
I understand. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, next up, uh, we have, uh, a presentation by J.D. Solomon updating us on our water supply study that he recently has come close to finish.
That's a tough act to follow right there, guys.
Now we're ready, we're warmed up and ready now.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me back. J.D. Solomon, um, as I get ready, this, uh, project was kinda, came around about four months ago or so and y'all approved it to, um, really look at affordability for what had become a $700 million program. And so if I forget, I wanna say it now, I wanna thank the public utility staff, uh, every time I need to meet with somebody or get somebody together, we did it. I'll also say the same for Clayton and Town of Benson, uh, when I needed Benson, they were right there. When I needed Clayton, they were driving, just like your guys were driving right along. So I wanna thank that. Um, I've got it down to 15 slides, so hopefully I'll be brief in all that you've got here. Um, couple terminology things, um, for this presentation. Long-term water supply plan is the plan and that was developed by Hazen or Hazen and Sawyer, as you know them. It really dates back to about the early 2000s when this original scheme came around, but they put the plan together for this over the last five to seven years. The lower news water supply program is the 700 million in quotes there. It may be more. You've heard the cost is still going up and delays going up, but 700 is where we've got it marked at right now. Um, I will, those last, the other two lines, I will refer to the county and the towns as that, but for the public's sake, there is an enterprise fund here. Um, there's about 40,000 connections in Johnston County Public Utilities. There's about 10,000 in the Town of Clayton's. So that is a distinction from the general fund that we like to make sometimes. Of course, y'all have, all the citizens of the county pay taxes, so y'all have the general fund and can move the money around to help studies and assessments and stuff where needed. Um, and again, for the public, you guys know who the local government commission is, but if I say LGC, you'll know that. Um, oop, uh, problem statement was really to look at the short-term case. The plan was really a long-term plan, net present value, what's the most affordable thing through 2050 to do? And that's exactly what they did. Um, so no criticisms there. Uh, but what you guys charged me with was to look at wholesale agreements, financial impacts, existing infrastructure and potential stranded costs for an intermediate approach. And 2030 was the original plan link, I'll show you that in a second, but really this intermediate approach needs to kinda be looked at between about 2030 and 2040 to make it effective. So something short of 2050, but something we can make, maybe make everything more affordable. Um, I didn't recreate anything, I think you guys know that. We've had meetings with our wholesale suppliers in the past. We, Clayton's been there, Johnston County's been there. We met with them all one time again, some of them twice, got more information reports. Everything you see tonight for me wasn't generated by me, it was brought by those discussions and other documents they gave us in those discussions and that you've seen before. So final report, we'll reference all of that information. Conclusion here, the recommendation at this point, um, is to acquire up to six million gallons of wholesale capacity from the city of Raleigh and delay the major expenditures for the proposed program for around 2033 or the 2035. Financial types will have to work that out, but the short-term wholesale agreements should give us enough capacity to bridge and have some more, um, affordable solutions as we go past, uh, 2033 instead of 2030. Refresh you real quick in the public, what this program looks like on the left is the map, uh, where the water supply intake will be at Richardson Bridge Road. It's got a pretty long way to go up to the quarry site, which is there north of Princeton. Um, there, the plant will be built on the, um, the new 12 million gallon plant at the edge of the reservoir that was purchased about 25 years ago. And then all that water will be mainly pumped to the western part of the county from east to west. Uh, there were three major projects in that, one, the main transmission line for raw water up from the intake up to the, to the quarry and the plant. The other to move the pipeline across the, the county. And then finally, the, the, the 12 million gallon plant. All of that was supposed to, hopefully in the original plan, be online by 2030. And that's what you were kinda being asked to approve to go to public or to advertisement back in February, March. And so we kinda slowed down and took a look at this. Um, financial impact, hold your breath. Um, I've got permission from Clayton to use these. Clayton's got their numbers together. We're still, as you guys know, our financial consultant with the county still has some tweaking to do, so tonight I can really just speak, um, from Clayton's perspective completely. Uh, hopefully, Mr. Chairman, you'll have me back in July and I can put the final touches on the whole plan here, but I think we know enough tonight to kinda start moving in a direction without waiting another five to six weeks for a final decision. Um, 2025 combined rates for Clayton was about $134 for water and sewer. If we did the plan to complete it in 2030, that number would have jumped 216% to $290 per month for average residential connection in Clayton. So that was some of the instinct that Clayton had and some of you, you guys had that when you looked at 700 million dollars. You said this is gonna knock the socks off. Now, the good news about this is I think staff on both ends realized and collectively all of us that 2030 was just not gonna happen from affordability. So I think everybody now is assumed a 2033 end date and that's what Clayton has been looking at and I think that's what the county's been looking at as well from financial planning. And Clayton's got that modified program, if we can start in about 2033, they think down into the low teens for rate increases, which is about half the increase here that which is about half the increase here that we'll be. And hopefully, the county will be, I think preliminarily, will be something similar or lower than that even. So that's the financial.
Question, you, differently.
Yes.
What are the dynamics that would, would make it advantageous to push that out further? Why would that bring about lower rates?
The, the main thing for Clayton, well, there's, the primary factor is they've got a huge water and sewer program that's underway, and those expenditures are starting to happen. Some of that debt in their water sewer CIP and goes to the wastewater project starts falling off, so as that falls off, this kinda replaces it. And I think we've got a similar situation with the county, 'cause I could've presented this a lot of different ways. The, the water part of the bill's not as high in absolute dollars, but it's still, that's the rate that people see the combined water sewer CIP and that enterprise. So that's what I wanted to show y'all.
And for these numbers that are suggested, would that be just town of Clayton residents that are paying that, or that, is that the average for the Johnston County citizens?
No, this, what I'm showing you tonight is just Clayton. I've just got the Clayton numbers in my hand now.
Okay.
And they're hesitant too, 'cause they're approving budgets and they don't want anybody to freak out about rates. And obviously, they've decided this rate's not acceptable to them, and hence, they've helped us a lot to try to find some alternatives here.
Yep.
So I don't wanna freak out. This is not gonna be what's gonna happen in Clayton, but this is just for Clayton residential connections.
Okay.
Snap start of what could happen.
Right.
Could happen. Could happen, but not gonna happen.
Right.
Right.
Emphasize, so...
Right. Thank you.
Okay. So basically, what, why that's important though, when you ask why Clayton, why he's here talking about Clayton other than the thing, is that most of the action is gonna happen in the Clayton area. And Clayton being neighbors, you just talked about Flowers Plantation and you talk about Cleveland, a lot of those people out there have Clayton mailing addresses. That's not town of Clayton. Clayton's, you know, inside the borders, but everybody out there says, so this is really western and eastern. And what I will say from the old water supply plan, that quote, Clayton area also needs the water faster, but also needs to have the greatest level of uncertainties, and we'll talk about that. But your numbers out of your, your plan were in the west. And we look at this by east and west with chloramines and chlorines and technical stuff. But in the west, the county's gonna grow by about 90,000 people between now and the 2050. Okay, 90,000 people. Two and a half people for a count that's grown by about 30 or 35,000 connections, right? So you could pay, back to the question of why's driving the cost? As you wait a little bit longer, you get more and more residences building up that need this water, and so you got more and more people to spread the cost out. So that's a second factor why it starts to get cheaper, 'cause your, your base is building up, right?
It's a revenue fund, the end users are the ones that are paying the cost.
That's exactly right.
If we gotta borrow money, they've got to retire the debt through the user fees that are being paid.
Yes. And, and the need for water was being driven by get it done by 2030, and if we can stretch it out a little bit longer, we can have that base catch up a little bit more. The, the contrast over here, and I know Commissioner Rose, you've got the same thing in the eastern part. The eastern part by these numbers is only slated to grow 7,000 people in that same period of time. So it does sound like two different counties at times.
Very much so.
And we're bringing in this water all the way across from basically Princeton to get over to the people on the western side that's gonna grow about 100 and some thousand people, not 90 some thousand people. So that's just the water districts. I think the town of Clayton, that's, that's amazing. That's not Clayton, probably, that's just your water districts, which is unincorporated. So, but that's where the uncertainties are. Now, how did we get to kinda where we were? And I'll explain this in more detail on a text slide, but basically, the top, I'm gonna hit the wrong button here. Like, careful.
You got your glasses right there in case you need them.
It looks like red. The red's not showing up. Yeah. Okay. There we go. So this is the original plan that Clayton did in 2019 data. And you can see, this is average daily demand, but about 4.1 MGD running around in this 2019, 2020 timeframe. And they would've said back then by that forecast that it'd been there by 2024. By now, they'd be there and had all that, right? So they'd have needed two more million gallons by that date. What's really happened is this black line, which means it really hasn't changed that much. So back to the uncertainties, a couple brick projects happened, happened, some of the industrial stuff didn't come online fast. Not too uncommon, but based on the projection back then, they said we'd have needed it in the 2024 timeframe. By the new projected from Clayton, we won't need it for 2029. Okay? So that's about a five-year difference. And you'll see the same thing on maximum demand, same thing kinda happened. Now, this, the previous slide talked about what Clayton's actually bought from the county, which is 6.1. This kinda converts it into maximum day, which is the worst day of the year, basically, that'll happen. It's hard to design and build for that, but you still have to be ready, and your system doesn't have a lot of storage. But still, that gap is about five years. So are we gonna theoretically maybe need more by 2030? We sure are. Can we really get the plan online by 2030? Probably not. Okay? So what all this tells us is, and I won't read all this to you, but obviously, what we projected to happen on the Clayton side didn't happen. Lot of uncertainty, a lot of growth coming. Doesn't mean it won't happen faster. I'm kinda simple, though. If you look at the bottom, wholesale capacity buys you some time. And based on past performance, every million gallons you buy buys you a couple of years of maybe breathing room. And so hence, when we go to Raleigh to start talking about how do we get that, your numbers with Raleigh is you could pick up two MGD pretty fast. Short-term, it's about a million and a half of capital cost. We've gone kind of in detail with them, not for public, well, we're here talking in general terms tonight. There'll be capacity fees, that'll be about $8 million to get two more MGD from Raleigh. And if we get six MGD for Raleigh, it'll run out in the short-term, it'll be about $60 million on our side, not on their side. They're gonna pay for their side, we'll pay for our side to get into Clayton, and probably another 20 million in capacity charges. So about 80 million to get six. Now, that's a big number. That's why I just heard the previous comment, that's a huge number compared to what we just talked about. But when you put it in large terms of 800 million, 700 million, it's, it's a pretty reasonable number to bring that much more capacity in. And it may be to buy you as many as 10 or 12 years of time and plot on the whole program. So some other reasons this is good is project delivery risk. Some of this has to be now that if you don't have this excess capacity, if you gotta get things done by 2030 or 2033, and you got a big mega project, it's, that's a big project by any standard, Charlotte or Raleigh, $700 million is a big program. All those projects have kinda come down fast. Budget, schedule, value engineering, can't get certain parts. You don't have any slack in there as you try to deliver that project. The other part with governance and state approvals, you've got a 50-50 partner with Clayton, right? They're gonna take half the capacity, and you're gonna have half the capacity, or public utilities will. But LGC still has to look at all those design bill, which is what your plan is. All those GMPs, those guaranteed maximum prices have to be approved by both parties. So if you guys change commissioners and get wet feet, or Clayton changes commissioner and get wet feet two years from now, now you're arguing about, are we gonna suck up the extra money or the time or whatever it takes? And so this is very problematic if you don't have a little bit of buffer in there in the short term.
I started to ask you about what are the gutters, but I think you're already talking about what, some of the gutters.
Getting some of the gutters right here.
Yeah.
Same with the LGC, state approvals, LGC. Now, Davenport's working with y'all on your bond issues and those type of issues. They also work with Clayton, different bunch of people. But even if we'd have had the money this fall, Davenport told me from the Clayton perspective, and they wrote a letter of this effect, that it would probably be at least six to nine months before we could really get the LGC to approve this and its complexity, since they've got a new staff at LGC, a new treasurer. They don't do many of these, this is huge, and you got two independent parties trying to deliver this, so...
And the LGC approval is a critical step.
It is, it is. It's not to say it won't happen, but it will take several meetings and, and several months to make that happen. So it, it puts, the 20, the original 20-30 shot clock was really tight with that. Robustness is usually in reliability, to, to take something not expected from outside, right? The bigger, the heavier something is, the more it could. You're still building your big plant, you're still building your big program, but you have a little bit of wholesale capacity. If some unexpected things happen, you got some robustness. And the same thing with resiliency. If you have any problems in your own system, if you're not on the edge, having that wholesale capacity also gives you more resilience in the system to find this bouncing back. So there's a lot of good reasons to add some wholesale capacity into the system. And while that's really kind of a, something that needs to be done sooner than later. So what do we look at? Just to go back now, half slides, y'all got a long night ahead of you. So I might go through all these to keep it short. But we went back and talked to Raleigh, to Wilson, to Harnett County, Dunn, and Goldsboro. And in my backup slides, I can show you what those scenarios look like if you'd like to see them. But far and away, the Raleigh option came out to be the best. I'll actually say Clayton had a study of smaller reservoirs in its area. They said, you know, if we can't work it out with the county a couple of years ago, we're gonna build our own reservoir and our own plant, and however that would work from the serve. But Johnston County Public Utilities also looked at the same option back as they were doing the master plan to say, could we build a reservoir near the Timbrough Water Plant, which would be in the west? There's some reasons that that could be helpful, but it's not gonna help you in the 2030 to 2040 or 2030 to 2035 range. It just won't happen, not gonna happen that fast. The other things that didn't look at and wasn't charged to was modifications to the long-term plan. One of the things that could happen is, instead of 12 MGD plant, you might could cut it back to eight if you had six more million gallons in the west, or you might not. But there's some things that could've gone with, how do I build this out and do I do different delivery methods? Could I get a cheaper price or something different? And then we talked, we've talked some with, recently, several of us have talked with, with Dunn and Harnett County about buying some capacity in their plant. Wilson's talked about that. Goldsboro's even talked a little bit to us about, you may buy some from us in the short term, we might buy some from you in the long term. But that's really not part of my scope, our scope, our company's scope at this point, that's more longer-term things. And so we'll help with that with regionalization, but I, I don't think it's part of this stuff.
Mr. Solomon, is the message there, there's other local governments that look for options as well?
They are, they are. Because they're like you, once you get your plant built, you won't need all that capacity in the beginning, and you're gonna be looking to, you can upload a little bit of that, right? And then you get in a hole, and then you gotta buy something from somebody else. So that's exactly right, Commissioner. So back to this, net impacts, you guys can read this. All those other things, softer things that I talked about that help you with project delivery, with LGC, with resilience, this approach would help you with that. And my last slide, I think other benefits, I think this has really helped us a lot with the discussions with our neighboring utilities. They've had their own share of turnovers with their elected officials and their directors. So it's given us a chance to, Clayton and Johnston County to get on the same page with their neighbors and meet them face-to-face and see them under the current context. I think the transmission projects, I don't mention it much here, but the big project also has some interface with Clayton. Clayton was probably gonna have to have some more capital projects to, to make some of the planning gaps up. Okay? And that may not be but 10 million or 15 million dollars or something, but that's still a gap. And, and this has really informed some of that decision on their end, 'cause it does affect their water and sewer CIP too. And then finally, I think some of our partners, economic development partners, our other local governments, our other elected officials, I think this whole dialogue of the last couple months has really brought a lot of people together, probably around this project, where like y'all, everybody's knew and then know the details and why, and how can we, or how can we not make it more affordable? So I tried to give you a very condensed presentation. I have slides, I'm gonna stop there. Hopefully, I'm back in July for a few more details. But I do think bottom line is, I think we need to, to move on with Clayton. I think Clayton's ready to go with some more detailed discussions with Raleigh. That doesn't need to wait for July 19th probably to get in deeper discussions.
My question is, how quick do we need to, to go and sit down with Clayton and Raleigh and work on that?
Rick, not, Rick on the spot, but, but Rick and Butch could probably talk tomorrow about it and say, how do we go to Raleigh? 'Cause it's, like I say, Clayton's kind of, and y'all staff has known about this, they've not been in all the meetings, but Clayton's really committed to finding a way to get at least two more MGD into their boundary. And I've had some discussions that I've not even been part of with Raleigh. So I think it's, it's not too late to go with that. And then there are some stuff that's going on with, with Harnett and Dunn and the, and the I-95 Alliance and that, that probably doesn't solve this whole problem, but it's, it's hot right now too and probably needs to be discussed.
And it opens up some options otherwise we didn't have before by starting those conversations.
That's exactly right. So those discussions are hot now, we probably don't need to, to be put off too long either. We need to get another layer deeper. And we need your elected officials to help drive that, because these, these kinda partnerships are built a lot of times between the elected officials, not the staff, so... Questions?
We have a lot of confidence in our staff, and we have a lot of confidence in you, J.D. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. You give us a lot to think about. I'm glad your explanation on the Clayton rates, it made me, as a, as a Clayton resident, yeah, I feel better that that was what might've been and not what it's gonna be. So thank you for...
Yeah, I had some stick to talk to you.
Getting my blood pressure back down a little bit on that one, so...
Mr. Rose, yes, sir.
Do you have any rates that are showing with this Raleigh venture? Like what that would look like?
Not, not at the present time. I mean, I have some alternatives that Clayton's giving me. They're pretty protective right now, like, like your staff would be with, with getting out to front on rates and budgets given the period of time in the year we are.
Okay.
So I think probably they have some, but it's not complete. And that's what we really need to start working on next.
Okay.
So, great question.
Yeah, and I would say along the lines, I mean, we have regular meetings with elected officials and then with Harnett and I-95, I-40 Alliance. We've got monthly meetings with those to discuss it. And I know on a staff level, they are routinely discussing things with, with Clayton and our other municipalities. So I feel good that those discussions are probably further along, particularly on the elected official side, that that's, three years ago, there was a different thought in Harnett County in particular about participating and, and working together, and, and now seems that the... It's got momentum now. Yeah, the board is looking, looking into it for reasons. Commissioner Stovall said that everybody's in the same boat and wants to make sure we've got a way that we're not putting a huge burden on the users to pay for everything now for something that's gonna last for 50-plus years in our long-term plans, so...
Yeah. And again, long-term, but what's part of this, Goldsboro doesn't kinda pencil out in the short term, but they're really eager, the mayor, some elected officials, to figure out a way to work more with Johnston County. And so it's worth kinda secondarily, long-term, have some more conversations with Goldsboro and Wilson too, going along with the mountain.
All right. If I could, I'd like to just comment that, you know, when I came on board a year ago and, 'cause I came in early when the gentleman I was facing passed away unexpectedly, I was really pleasantly surprised at the quality of long-range planning that our utility staff had done in this regard. They, they had a viable plan and had one on the books for a number of years. The only problem is, is the cost of water and sewer capacity has gone up tremendously in recent years, and it's not coming down anytime soon. In fact, it's probably gonna keep going up. And that's why we said, we, you know, we like the plan, but we can't afford the plan, or we don't think our end users can afford a plan right now. That's why we were looking at options and, and asked Mr. Solomon come on board and help us examine those, and how can we mitigate this cost and spread it out over time and make it more palatable to the people who's gotta pay the bill? And, but ultimately, I think that our plan will come to fruition, but we've got some ways to, like I say, mitigate that cost now, buy some time. And there is potential that we can come up with a regional water approach with those counties and towns that have access to the Cape Fear. Our only water source right now is the Neuse River, and it's, it's under a lot of stress.
Yeah. So, and I, and I, I just want, I don't wanna leave you there, I think you can delay the big project very long, but it gives you a little bit of breathing room.
A little bit of breathing room.
Y'all get all that, and I just wanna make sure the public does too.
That was our charge, you guys.
We, we gotta do the big project, but this...
Find some breathing room.
Yeah. So hopefully, I've done that. I appreciate it. I thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stovall's been here, Commissioner Rose, you've been here. Obviously, the chairman's been here, the rest of you have been here, and I know you're talking. Patrick, you were here in the last, a lot of regionalization discussions, but y'all have really been an active board, and I, I can't tell you from working other places and other parts of the country, that is really a critical part to have y'all engaged and a critical part to have y'all engaged and really wanting to find the solutions and participating. So thank y'all very much.
All right. Thank you. One quick question of staff, will whatever that meeting in July, or only meeting date in July, was that reasonable time to expect our rate study will be completed and they can...
We're pretty close on the latest version of our rate study.
I hate to ask you, but can you either hand her the microphone or come up? Sorry about that.
It's okay. We're pretty close to having that final draft of the rate study completed and ready to share with the board. But also then we would be sharing it with the town of Clayton, and I'm sure there'll be more iterations as we look at the projects together. We pull their rate study together and our rate study together. I do want to also add, I have been talking with staff at City of Raleigh in this initial 2 million gallons a day. I think we've got a plan that can be able to move forward rather quickly on that. The other piece I want to mention while I'm here is we were talking about Clayton and Clayton's growth and their rate projections and their demand projections allowing us to push this project out. I don't want to lose sight of the other towns and customers that we have in the county. Some, we have a modest growth, very small amount in this, in our current planning projections. If we have any of these towns come in in the meantime with large projects, large water demands, you know, the more we push this project out, the less likely we'll be able to meet those types of demands in that near term until we have additional water supplies available. Just don't want to lose sight of that because we've talked so much about Clayton.
So hopefully they watch that and hear that to know that our water supply is stretched.
Stretched, yes.
Well, yeah. And I think that's some of the things you talk about with Harnett County and Four Oaks and Benson and Dunn, because they could be kind of in their own domain down there trying to solve these problems a little bit themselves and not depend, no depend on you and Harnett County commissioners to make things happen, but that would help them out. And of course, I'm not trying to put off the other people, but the plan and everything says we've got to worry about the western part, and I'm generally calling that Clayton area, but it's your water districts in Clayton where the growth is happening.
We saw the hot spots.
Yeah, I know. It was kind of crazy. You got, oh yeah, oh yeah, probably ahead of it. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank y'all very much. All right. This brings us to the main event. I feel like I don't have that announcement.
Let's get ready to rumble.
So the next item is the fiscal year '25, '26 budget discussion and our adoption. Rick, do you have anything, or you just wanted to run along to start taping our knuckles?
I would just say thank you to the board. I know this is, there's a lot of moving parts here with the revaluation and trying to balance all the needs, and I just come in and brought the work you all have done. And I hope you've gotten everything from staff that you needed along the way. So thank you very much.
So I know that Vice Chairman Harris has been working a little bit on this, and if the board doesn't object, I think he has a motion, we can get that on the table, and then we can have the discussion once, I'm assuming it's going to get a second, and then we can have all the discussion we want on it before we vote. So.
That's Chairman Harris. Okay. Let me just say, Mr. Chairman, this is, yeah, this motion is not particularly any one commissioner's wishes. This is a group effort with a lot of discussion with all seven commissioners and the manager and finance director and all the other folks. A lot of work has gone into it, and so there's been compromise and giving and taking, and so we're, this is the result of those weeks and weeks of work. So I moved to adopt the county manager's proposed budget with the following revisions. Reduce the county property tax rate to 52 cents per $100 valuation. That's a 15-cent reduction. Reduce the countywide fire tax rate to 11.5 cents per $100 valuation. Also, at the request of the Johnston County Fire Commission, that we adopt the fiscal year '26 fire funding matrix. Allocate an amount not to exceed $500,000 for a new behavioral health urgent care. Include 3% pay adjustment effective July 1st for county employees with the possibility of up to a 2% performance pay increase in October. Allocate $110 million for supplemental current expense and $3.5 million for capital outlay for Johnston County Public Schools. Allocate $9,290,303 for supplemental current expense and $4,570,504 for capital outlay for Johnston Community College. Allocate $325,000 for Harbor Incorporated. Per the recommendation of the Research Training Zone Board, approve a tax rate of 8 cents per $100 valuation. Per the recommendation of the Moccasin Creek Service District Board, approve a tax rate of 2.5 cents per $100 valuation. Allocate $100,000 to the Public Library of Johnston County and Smithfield Site Improvement Project. Allocate $1.395 million to Triangle Land Conservancy for the preservation of farmland and open space. Allocate $100,000 for Johnston Lee-Harnett Community Action. And allocate $100,000 for Transit Oriented Development Study, or TOD study.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there a...
I'll second a motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I will open the floor for discussion.
Just one clarification, Mr. Harris. The allocation for the Triangle Land Conservancy, that's not a carte blanche, is those typically are used as a, what's the word I'm looking for? Percentage match or... Yeah, matching funds.
Yes, sir. They leverage that amount.
A bit, yes, a bit, it's a...
It's like, yeah, I think it's typically seven, actually 10 to one sometimes.
Yeah. We get a tremendous return on that, and plus it's for the preservation of farmland and open space, which is really important, everybody on the board to try to preserve that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, this is my 13th budget discussion, and I must say, it's probably been our most difficult.
Yes.
We've just had a, we're a bigger county, we've got a lot going on. I know there's been a lot of feedback from citizens about the proposed rate that our county manager, but I need to remind folks that county manager's been charged with a lot of forward-thinking and a lot of projects down the road that we've neglected for a while. And in fact, we probably will have to push some of them down the road with this action. But I think with the drastic revaluation we've had and the impact it's had on our citizens' psyche, I think we're doing the right thing. But I want to commend the staff, they've worked so hard on this. Even on vacation, they take hardware with them to run projections and answer our emails. So they've done an outstanding job, and I commend them.
All right. Anyone else?
I'd like to comment if I may.
Yes, sir.
As Vice Chair Harris said, not everyone got everything they wanted in here, but I think we've got a good budget. Our approach is, as I do, I think my colleagues do as well, is affordability to our citizens is first and foremost in our mind. And the same is true for the utility plan. You know, we look at the original plan we had, it's a solid plan from a technical standpoint, but we looked at the growing price tag and said, we got to find some options to make it affordable. Same is true with this tax rate. I think we're doing that. Financial stability of the county is strangely important. It was mentioned, we have a significant capital need demand in this county. Services, demand for services are coming to bear on all of this residential development we've had over, particularly in the last decade. I think that, and some, you heard somewhat earlier about our development practices or policies in the past may have created consequences that were not fully understood at that time, that we were allowing these virtual towns to pop up like flowers, which was over 30 years ago. Utilities were run out into the Cleveland area with good intentions, but that's caused that area to explode. They have, one last count, I think about 47,000 people in a five-mile radius of the Cleveland area. That's bigger than any town we've got in this county, but they have no town taxing structure. 4042 interchange is another place where we've had tremendous growth to where it's become commercial and residential sprawl. 40 and 210 is headed that way. We need to try to manage that now and don't prevent another 4042 situation from occurring. But I think we have gotten quite a bit of information that we're gonna have to do more to ensure affordability going forward. We're gonna have to consider new development practices that preserve our precious water and sewer capacity for where it's gonna yield the most positive net gain in tax revenue. Residential construction doesn't pay for itself. I've said that many times, and I ran on that position. In North Carolina, the studies done have shown that on average, this is not Johnston County, but on average, residential for every dollar generated in property tax, it demands an average of $1.25 in cost of public services. You can see from right there that every time we, they bring a dollar in, we're spending $1.25 going out, so that depletes your cash balance. It's the development in commercial and industrial and farming that only demand back pennies on the dollar for every dollar they bring in property taxes. So you've got to have balance in your growth. You need the residents in order to attract businesses to come in, you need a trained workforce to do that. But we've gone too far one way. We've had Dr. Jeff Dorfman of NC State present, talk to our retreat, and he says, right now, Johnston County, 77% of our workforce leave the county every day to work outside of Johnston County. That is not a good statistic right there. You know, we're the classic definition of a bedroom community. And all we, majority of what we got here is residential that's not paying for itself. But it took, you get a tremendous amount of influx of tax base when these houses come online each year, but down the road, a number of years, that demand for services comes to bear, and that's what we're seeing now. That's one reason we couldn't go any lower with the tax rate that we did. We've got to be able to meet basic service demands as well as preserve our financial rating. Borrowing money at a reasonable rate, at the best rate, right at AAA, is what saves us tens of millions of dollars. We can't pay for it as we go because the money's just not there. But long as we maintain our fiscal stability and we have that AAA rating, which took us about 20 years to get, and I credit Mr. Hester here, we're keeping us on track to do that, we can, we now have the capacity to borrow money at the best possible rate out there in the market. And that's gonna be the key going forward to meeting this service need. DSS, that's what I heard about when I came into office a year ago, went over and looked at, they've literally got employers sitting in each other's laps over there. The demand for services has grown so much, but they don't have the physical facilities to accommodate all the people. We're gonna have to do something to do that. We went through that with the jail, that was before I came on the board. We had to have a new jail and public safety center because of the demand that came from the increased population. We've met that need, and we've got a top-notch facility out there that is state-of-the-art in technology. Community college, we've got to have better, more employers coming in here. Well, you gotta have a trained workforce. We've invested in that advanced manufacturing trainer center that the community college is going to teach in down there in Four Oaks. That's gonna be the key to attracting jobs to come into this county. The other thing about that, I know that, I'm not a big fan of industrial incentives, but, and we've seen a lot of criticism from citizens, but it's a necessary evil to attract businesses, employers to come and locate in your county. Every new potential employer is, they're putting out there, they're judging whether or not they want to come based upon the type of incentives they get. At least the ones that we have chose to use, we get the tax money in first, but we promise a certain percentage back over a limited number of years if that industry or employer meets the agreement terms to create so many jobs that we get it back. There's no money being paid out other than what they paid in. It's not all the taxpayer money that we're paying out. They're paying 100% of their taxes, and we're promising back a certain percentage of those for a certain number of years, provided the terms of that incentive agreement is met. That's the least amount of risk to us as a government entity that we can have. But we're gonna have to continue using incentives to get businesses who want to locate here so we can turn this trend around and start getting net positive revenue coming in in our tax structure. And that's about all I got to say, Mr. Chairman.
You unloaded there.
Well, it's not a message that a lot of people want to hear, particularly the ones that have believed that, you know, we have been on the right track with our development policies. We've been on a good track in some ways, but it's, the bill is coming due now, and we've got to do things differently in order to turn that around and get our tax structure in balance. And we have virtually depleted our water capacity. We've got over 15,000 building lots approved that have, basically we've allocated capacity to that hadn't even been built on yet. Once they're built, that's 40-plus thousand new residents right there. Then you got schools that got to come with that. You got water and sewer demands gotta be met, but we've already promised a certain amount out. You know, you heard Mr. Solomon come in here and talk about, we're gonna have, what is it, 90,000 people? He said...
In the Clayton area.
Western Park. And additional growth? Well, we already know we got enough approved lots out there to bring 40,000 of them here. And those are the ones that are generating debt negative gain tax revenue because they're residential. So we're gonna have to get industry here. Farming is not a big generator, still our top economic driver right now, but that's changed, rapidly changing because farmland is disappearing. We're making an effort to try to preserve farmland, but right now, like I said, they only demand back pennies on the dollar. Pharmaceutical companies, manufacturing, those are things we need to come in, and we need a trained workforce that can take advantage of that, rather than driving outside the county every day and spending that money elsewhere. And again, our focus to be, let's keep it affordable for our citizens. Let's try to preserve the quality of life we've got and make life here affordable. And that was my goal in this budget.
All right. All right, anyone else?
Should we all speak about the budget, or should we wait till close to comments?
I'll say something.
No, no, it's discussions.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna vote on it.
We're gonna vote, it's time for discussion.
Go ahead.
I'll say something. I'd say this is our, my first time ever going through this process, so I just want to say thank you so much to staff for all the questions, all the emails, all, everything of trying to get more information. And I know the past couple of weeks, just was talking with different people, and they're like, what is wrong? And I was like, it's budget. I said, it's something else. And I was like, I'm trying to make sure we're doing good use of your money. And they're like, well, I appreciate that. So, you know, this is, I feel like, speaking for me, but I also feel like this is also on behalf of the board too, is this something that's not that we take lightly. All of these decisions have a lot of thought in them, and a lot of thought not just in this year, but trying to be forward-thinking in what is the future of Johnston County in 2030 and 2035. And so a lot of the past week and couple of weeks, I've also been reflecting on all of the initiatives and goals that we set forward back at our retreat, and I feel like that this budget helps with some of that. And so like I said, making sure, you know, we have that also, that's good savings account so we can have those projects to go into fruition and being able to see completed. So that way, we're able to look after our county employees and our infrastructure and public safety and all of our goals of being able to help succeed those goals in our budget. And I think it's very important for the taxpayers to know that, that, you know, whatever we have that retreat section, you know, those are our goals in that we hope our budget helps reflect and accomplishes those goals.
All right.
Well, I would just like to add that I agree with Commissioner Goddard when this was the toughest budget I've ever done. This was my first, by the way, with the county, but there was a lot with the town, and this one was tough. And I want to say that we read those emails. Not all of us always replied from those emails, but we read those emails. We read the stories of how their lives were gonna be affected by what we do. And as I was leaving my business on the way here today, I said, I told my son and a lady that works for me, I said, the tough thing about tonight is, no matter, you know, no matter what we do, it's gonna affect every man, woman, and child in the county. It'll affect, it'll affect, you know, a lot of people. I mean, it's gonna affect everyone. When we have a tough zoning case or we have any other kind of case come for us, it might be, you know, subdivisions coming in, it may affect 100 people or 200 people. It may only affect two or three people, but this one affects everybody in the county. And on that note, I just wanted to say also kudos to our staff. It was as if they were working 24/7. We could email, text, day, night, weekends, holidays, it didn't matter. We were getting an answer back pretty quick and pretty quickly, and that was impressive. I will say that. But last of all, I would just say that we realize with the rate that's gonna be set forth tonight that it won't affect everybody equally, and that is, that was the most difficult thing for me in that if your property went up 40%, you're gonna be affected differently than if it went up 300%. And unfortunately, we were looking at, the only thing we could do is look at averages. That's the only thing we can do. We can't set a separate tax rate for each individual. And so I think everybody was mindful in that when we came up with a number that we wanted to be responsible, that our county would move forward, that we would be able to provide the services that people need and expect while not digging too deep into the taxpayers' wallet and be able to do, just do right by the people. And I commend everybody on this board because there was nobody phoning this in. Everybody was working hard and running models and asking Chad and Rick for different scenarios. So I just want to say, you know, I'm proud of this board for all the work that's going forward, and I hope that the people will understand that this was taken very seriously and that, and we're very proud of this county and proud of our citizens.
And I don't want to be redundant, but I do want to echo what the past few commissioners just said. Again, thanking staff. I don't think people realize our spreadsheets had spreadsheets, like they had baby spreadsheets. And there was a lot of dialogue and a lot of models and things discussed, and just like you said, and to Commissioner Pace Davis, it's a very heavy feeling, I think we've all had for the past couple of weeks, just knowing that there's not a magic button that's gonna make this fair and equal for everybody in the county. There's not a magic button that's gonna make anyone not be affected in some shape, form, or fashion. And so I think we all wanted to be aggressive as possible, but knowing that, you know, sometime the effect is making sure that I DSS employees are not sitting in each other's laps and that when families are having to go to DSS, you know, it's not because we want to shine a new building, it's because we want the playgrounds that are planned. And so many things that we have planned with that. And then, you know, same thing with our projects, as Commissioner Pace Davis said, to, you know, the judicial building, it's for the benefit of our citizens and the funds that are needed for our emergency services. None of this was taken lightly, and I too have the same sentiment, that I'm very proud of this board and the collaboration that happened to make sure that we felt like, as a whole, we were taking care of the county as best that we possibly could. So thank you again to staff for, even the questions as we're walking in today, what if you run one more model that says this? What does that look like?
One conduit, though, it's these of us a lot, but the one conduit we've had is Commissioner Harris and our chairman.
Amen.
Guys, they've been, they were quarterback on every play. We just got a handoff once in a while.
I do have one request. I want a 30-day reprieve for many spreadsheets.
And the baby spreadsheets.
Just give me 30 days with no spreadsheets.
Yeah, to mid-July.
No, sir, I just want to thank the citizens for their, first, their understanding and the ones who reached out and the conversations we had. We took all the emails very seriously and having conversations with the folks out. It affects every one of us, ourselves included. And so this is a tough time. I will say, this is the most difficult budget that I've been a part of, and I also want to thank fellow commissioners for taking my multiple phone calls, and there's, sometimes we, and Commissioner Davis, I drew a blank while I go, and I apologize, I talked there like six times today, I don't know.
I feel like they've all been talking back and forth. All of us have been talking to each other.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work going into it, and so we just, I appreciate everyone's work and staff and, you know, the county manager and finance director and all the folks that put so much... folks that put so much work and effort into it. We're, I'm glad, I'm glad to see it's moving forward, and we can take the county to the next level.
We haven't voted yet, have we?
No, no, I've still got something to say before I call for the vote.
We've used up all the words.
Yeah, yeah. So I did want to recognize, you'd mentioned emails, and I did want to recognize that we had some folks who sent in emails to give us their thoughts on the budget, and a lot of them, as Commissioner Rose said, were concerned over their ability to pay their taxes, you know, given whatever tax rate we selected. But those were, the sent in emails were Wanda Johnson, Shannon Peterson, Deion Anderson, Dan McCullen, Robert and Regina Edmondson, Deborah Cook, Hope Albert, and Dana Portis were the ones who had sent in. So, and thanks to them for sending in, taking the time, sending an email on that. And I want to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Stovall said. All the things that happened in the last 30 years, I feel like we're on a journey in Johnston County, and we have seen the teen years and maybe now into the 20s, and we're getting to the point where we look at things differently and can look back and see, you know, maybe how things, if they'd been this way, we'd had a different outcome. And so, I think that's what this board, we are looking backwards to learn, but we're also looking forwards to how we can do better and leave it better with some of the, you know, cost of services. You had mentioned with Dr. Dorfman, you know, looking at, you know, how do we grow our industrial base to take that burden off of the residents that live here? So a lot of things, JCC, how do we use that to accomplish some of that? How do we get our citizens ready to be part of that workforce that we're trying to have here and stay here? So I think we are looking forward and hoping to make decisions that in 2050, we're talking about water supply in 2050, that in 2050, they look back and say, we've, you know, made some decisions that were beneficial to the folks that are around in 2050. I do want to thank the staff, you know, for the countless hours, you said, driving back for the, from the beach, stopping to run models, or thinking about models, or taking a call on models all hours of the evening. And Jocelyn and her folks are still doing, we're still in the middle of appeals, or at the end of appeals, I mean, not the end. So we're still doing that. We're trying to get the budget ready and constantly being asked for updates. And then we have technical difficulties along the way, but our staff stays and sticks to it and works through it. So I can't say enough about them. And then to the board, again, I've said this before, from top to bottom, this is the best board in, God, I was going to say, 26 years I've been part of elected office, that from top to bottom, everyone is engaged. And that was epitomized through this process with the relentless communication. And so, I know my wife's watching, so I'll stay off the phone at least for the rest of the night when I get home. But thank to our spouses for putting up with all the calls and the time away from them as well. But I do want to, again, go back to the staff. You're the ones that's got to execute the plan, and y'all have done a great job for many, many years doing that. And as a board, we can't thank you enough for doing the hard, the hard work. You know, we come in here and blow in and blow out, and y'all stay, y'all are here every day, making sure you're getting the job done from, whether that's the ones in here, the ones out, putting in the utilities, are working at the landfill. We've got folks who are giving it their best effort every day. So I think, let me see if I've got anything else here. And I will finally thank the residents because, you know, they're the ones that foot the bill for everything that we do. So when, I think, when we were looking at the budget, that was something that we all kept in mind, is what is the, you know, what can the regular resident or average resident, what can they afford, and how do we make decisions to that, but also plan for the future? So again, thank you to the residents. Thank you for those who sent in information and their comments. We all appreciate that. And with that, I will finish talking and ask for a vote on the budget. So with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The budget is done. Thank you. All right. Well, I feel like there should have been some fireworks or something like that. At least some confetti.
Like a YouTube, there we go, you know, put that on the screen.
And we'll add one, like I said, I've been 26 years, there's 21 budgets, and this has definitely been the most complicated by far. All right, next up, manager reports and comments.
We've used up.
That's how you stay, that's how you stay manager for so long. You can read the room, huh? All right, board comments and reports. I'll start with you, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir, I think we've talked about, oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. There was, there was one thing. Downtown Smithfield Development Corporation is applying for a grant to do some work downtown, again, on the library project, I think. And they've asked the county for just a letter of support, just sort of a, supporting their request for the budget. And so, the manager has drafted a letter, and if the board is okay with that, then...
I move with, we'll support it.
Okay, all right. And they're not asking for, I mean, it's not a funding thing, it's just a, it's just a letter of support for their grant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hester. Appreciate it.
All right. Commissioner Rose?
I'm all done.
Did we need a motion for that or not?
No, I think it's consensus.
Okay. I was just going to recognize Ms. Andrews. She has been vital also in us getting all the information we needed with regard to the budget. Now, we mentioned staff, we include her, but sometimes it's not obvious. And so, I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate you for all the questions, again, even in the 11th hour of what about this and what happens when. So just thank you and your staff. Please pass that along to them, that we appreciate everything that they have also helped with over the past six months.
All right. Did you?
No, I think I'm good.
I thought you changed your mind.
Yeah, I was making sure.
Yeah. Commissioner Davis?
So last Wednesday night was the Isaiah House. They had their Holy Graffiti Night, which was really cool. So I was able to go to that and see a lot of our DSS employees and just community members coming together for that project. So that was just a really cool, just, I'm really excited for whenever that comes to, come to, come to life. And then just also echoing, thank you, Adam, for putting it on the screen. All the upcoming UDO drop-in sessions, we would really love all the public's information that is going to be gathered with that. As many of us have echoed before, that we're really hoping that the new UDO can help reflect Johnston County and Guy Johnson County for the future.
All right. Mr. Stovall?
Mr. Chairman, my comments earlier, I had mentioned there's a lot going on in the General Assembly that unfortunately is not very good for local governments because there is a, assuming right now they want to restrict the authority of local governments to affect zoning decisions, which would cause irrefutable harm to our ability to manage our budgets and also to build and preserve our bond rating. First bill, House Bill 765, our general counsel prepared a very good argument that was sent out on that to the legislature to register our displeasure, along with, I think, hundreds of towns and just practically every county in the state. I think that bill was beat back, as I mentioned, unfortunately, unrelated bills, Senate Bill 205, dealing with the regulation of swimming pools, went from two pages to 19 pages, and a lot of the objectional provisions of 765 are now in that swimming pool bill. I would like to ask our staff to prepare similar type arguments to be sent to the General Assembly so that they would know that we're on record, again, that these are not acceptable changes from our viewpoint. Now, obviously, they can do what they're going to do, but I think they need to understand that voters of the state expect them to do what's right by its citizens.
All right. Any, I don't know why I'm asking, any problems with directing staff to go ahead and do that? All right. All right, staff, you can take care of that. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, someone earlier mentioned about our, Director of our Tax Office, Jocelyn Andrews. Not only has she done a great job, but in addition to the other duties, our attorney, Ms. Slusser, with all that she's got going on, she's also been part of those appeals processes. She's had to be on site every time, so we really appreciate what she's done. This morning, Chad McLam put together, his staff put together a training session for our employees from all departments that had to do with finance and dealing with, well, all kinds of things, flow of paperwork, the integrity of the system with checks and balances, proper procedures for dealing with vendors, purchase orders, all of that sort of thing that they deal with every day. It was a good class, and I commend Chad and especially Pam Radford and her two Aprils that led the discussions. It was, it was a good class. And it's one of those things that makes them better employees as far as making all that work.
All right. Thank you. I will, I did want to mention again, the UDO updates, they're on the screen. I don't know if that's on the video, but if you can get that on the screen, there's one, two, three, four, five more opportunities to, for the public to come out and make comments. I think so far, the first two sessions, the consultant is there and, you know, has listened to a lot of comments and question answered a lot of questions. So definitely take advantage of the meeting in your community to go out and provide your input to that as well. Couple of things, I'm going to talk about next year's budget a little bit and maybe plant some seeds. We have, we have looked at funding formulas for public schools, and I would hope that we can continue that so that, and like many counties have done, and see if we can develop a formula and present it to our school board, and see if we can negotiate something out so that each year we're not, you know, trying to figure out how to resolve this, that we've got a formula we can look at. The other thing is, we had nonprofits this year, and I think it's a board we have discussed taking that out of the process and looking at contracting with the nonprofits that we've traditionally given funds to, or even once we haven't, but doing that on a contract basis, and if we could have staff look into transitioning to that. The other couple of quick updates, it goes along with some of the Senate and House bills. Had an opportunity, I think it was Tuesday, it may have been Wednesday, can't remember, last week, but the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners had their Legislative Agenda Conference, and was able to go to that. And I would say without a doubt, all 100 counties have issues with many bills that are proposed, from everything from zoning to property tax values. So a lot of discussion there. And then finally, the regionalization. We've had a meeting last week with, like I said, Harnek County, Dunn, Four Oaks, and Benson discussing regionalization, and we expect those talks to continue. There seems to be a spirit of collaboration and cooperation there to see if we can work out some agreements and opportunities that are beneficial to all of us. And then the final thing, probably the most important thing, is there's a little gentleman in Johnston County, Zane Scott Carroll, who turned five today. He may or may not be my fifth grandson out of the eight, but he is watching. So Zane, happy birthday from Poppy B. So, and I hope he didn't watch the whole meeting, but that's all that I have, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move with adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned.